I don't, you know, stay hydrated with this.
Air conditioning is working today.
A single hatch.
That's good.
Carry that in your pocket with rounds in the chamber.
I'm gonna pull that out.
Cover up that one duct, it blows right on top.
Oh, you catch the brad there.
Yeah.
The coolness.
You just need more insulation. I got some for you.
Hasn't got time to earn that much insulation.
I could share with you my diet. My wife eats the same thing that I do and she gains weight like a bugger. And then she looks at me and says, you must have hemorrhage. Yeah.
Good. That's high blood pressure.
Apparently I had polycali about it.
I, I forgot about it. That was last week.
Anybody gonna pull the float this year?
For the party?
Republican.
Yeah. Trying. Uh, I don't have any pull.
Oh.
I usually do first.
Sounds like a good job for guys.
Bancroft, I usually do. Well, sometimes Bancroft, the last time Brett did Bancroft.
Did he?
Oh, the pads are dry or how you?
I might. I think I buy it.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Or do you want that for a beer?
We got Indian day reading Saturday.
Yeah. I have that on my shoulder because there's a all school or union.
Yeah.
They're all graded, but you're gonna go. Might be a few of your friends there.
No, half of them are dead.
Yeah, that happens. Most of mine are not around here, but there's a few that are. Plus, and it'll only be part of my class. Graduated from Moogona, but even before coming down here, we had WCLT, so some was going to Crystal Lake.
And then before that, it was Buffalo Center. You never got in on that.
I think I passed it down too.
Travis graduated in Buffalo, made it way its way back, so.
I'll take responsibility.
Glenn, Glenn was the last one to graduate because they got so many towers above.
Okay. Well, yeah, that would've been a few years ago.
She's the.
But she got that other out before though.
Okay.
But she got old.
Yeah, I'll do a day at a time.
Yeah.
It's a.
You're older today than you were yesterday.
Yep.
Really? You, you're beating your record every day, longest time led, yeah, in your life.
New first, no best.
Yeah.
Yeah, encouraging thought every morning.
Every morning, yeah.
Yeah, that is something to think about.
Where you get up to Okoboji and everybody's saying, there must be.
You'll never be any younger than us today. No?
Ever just huge.
I don't know, maybe I'm just gonna stay twenty four.
A little expensive.
We can try, but I don't know that that's gonna work.
Well, the option of staying the same age isn't a good one.
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Did you go through all the lease agreements on this time?
With the hospital?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That was, the city is the only one.
The city attorney went through it, I mean, Todd.
Benjamin Buck.
Todd looked at the city attorney changes.
No, they, so, yeah. It's like we watched him born as an old man. Yeah, we watched the movie in the cinema last, and then he basically dies.
The stuff that was all highlighted. Uh, suggested changes from the cities.
I don't know how you'd be.
No, I mean.
But yeah, we went through that with Todd yesterday morning.
Yeah. It's kind of funny, and then the end of the list is that. I had to read without it, but I probably was.
They wounded it up too much.
That guy brought a damn tractor on the yard. The other days, I pulled a rust like that off, and very end of the day, I said thirty ten and they can't. The next day, he comes with Notre Dame.
With parts to move.
Tractor that Saturday is the rate.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
You know, when she's supposed to be concerned, what would be more liberal socialist than letting some private company?
Yeah.
When it breaks away from them. That's, that's about so.
He's Jack.
Oh, not.
No, no, the movie, the movie, I think it is Jack.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So, Robin Williams movie where he ages at an accelerated grade, so he's like. Time he's in middle school or whatever. Nope. Can't even get it off of the power washer, it just peaked on.
Oh, yeah. Gentlemen. You have eight persons in person. Good morning.
Good morning, Major.
Good morning. You've been a hard guy, you're not supposed to be here. Josh, Carlos, Peter, Jack, and me too.
And you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll have too much fun this summer.
Yeah.
Right?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You'll enjoy it. We'll come in and give you a hard.
Yeah.
Please do.
Yes.
Yeah. What's that?
Some of the organic fields.
I have, yeah.
Interesting well news.
Yeah, some of them, yeah.
Do you get a hold of, uh?
Aaron. Yep, I have, I've got a hold of him.
That was great.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think Mark does a pretty good job over by Laverne, but you get towards us then to help all them. By all the grams, like I say, they've got even over, over east.
Like, so the west side, the east side of this place, there's the.
Yeah.
Down, if you're not already.
Yeah. 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 One of those dealers, you wonder what they're doing.
Well, his.
Yeah, yeah.
Beats, beats him.
Right.
Phil and Chris is gonna kill the whole board meeting. Big chunk.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, get him in here then. Okay.
I'm just passing.
I'm showing off.
Yeah.
Eight thirty.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
From the back, there's three ugly interest groups.
First, we're up at eight o'clock on the. You're on the.
Amen.
As against him was domain.
Ron, you didn't tell me who you was gonna bring ahead of time. I don't know if I would've okayed it.
Just kind of the scene. I have no comment. That's rare for me.
It is.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah, it is, yeah, it's exactly, yeah.
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 It always gets you pissed aside. I didn't feel like starting this by a voice.
That I can charge again, I mean, we're not here also, but just tonight.
That's, that's. You can't make great decisions. I saw her walking to the bar. It's serious, I brought a box of papers. They're in the parature. Yep, yeah, it's in the code.
You should tell them that.
It's on my tippers.
Both in Belinda Violet, he's like, that's from all the hands that I've received. So I put these in, because there's something massive.
Eleven fifty-nine, forty-five seconds.
Fifty-two seconds.
It's all. What we do, we're in that right bed.
You don't, you have to look at the clock.
Yeah.
And decide if it was actually on the second.
It's eight o'clock, let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and without sin.
Thank you. For public discussion, we're gonna let Ron, you've got a short one?
Very short one.
Good.
We're just here ahead of time, I'm representing me, myself, Edgar Meyer, uh, we're with the Sioux Tiger Motorsports Museum. Uh, what we're doing is we're applying for a pants Iowa grant to try to get our edition put on. We're going to be housing the all Iowa racing hall of fame. And part of our grant application, which you guys are familiar with grant applications, like a lot of pages. Part of it is, is your county, if there's any county contribution, they're looking for that and any city contribution. So what we're looking for is to get on the agenda for next week and maybe discuss, so if you guys.
Yeah.
What was my mother? But just so you can understand what we're doing out there and, and what we're asking for, no big monetary donations, they're just looking for a letter of support from you guys and something in kind.
Good.
So like I said, you can give us on the agenda, we'd really appreciate that.
We will put it on the agenda for, you got any time you'd like to be on?
Sooner the better.
We'll put it on right away.
Awesome.
Is that awesome?
Appreciate that.
You and Mr. Meyer come in and give us a hard time.
Next time he gets to talk.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Stacy.
So obviously we've had a bunch of people here on behalf of the, we want to talk about the carbon capture pipeline, and so I am, have the privilege today of introducing you to Doyle Turner. Doyle Turner is from Woodbury County, and he has been in this fight, he's been a true courageous warrior, he's trying to connect all the counties together. Like we have talked about at previous meetings here about getting counties to work together instead of apart. Um, and he has some great points on how we can be on the offense instead of the defense, so I'm going to let Doyle now take over, but I'm gonna hand out these sheets of a letter of intent. I did message every one of you a video on carbon sink, so Jack, you got yours on Messenger, I hope, maybe, I sent it to you. I don't know how many you read it, but, uh, anyway, everybody else should have gotten it. All right, Doyle.
Thank you, Stacy. Doyle Turner, I'm from Mobile, Iowa, and, um, I, I invested in a company called Rentech years ago, wasn't the best investment I made, but I did learn that they were selling CO2 many years ago, and it was very profit. So I knew this CO2 had a lot of value, and I knew that these large companies that we're dealing with, they're after the CO2, the subsidies that they're getting are unbelievable, but that's a small portion of the story when you look at the value of the CO2. So I was searched out for a company that could add value to our CO2 so that we could keep that income within our state, within our local economies. So I found Carbon Sink, Carbon Sink is the one that has offered you a letter of intent. Um, they are willing to go to every county that has an ethanol plant in their county and offer them a letter of intent to build in their county. Now, these plants, to begin with, as they start, are gonna cost around three hundred million a piece. This is not a small deal. But this will raise our, the amount of fuel that we produce in our state by sixty-six percent. So when you add all, because one bushel of corn produces three gallons of ethanol, it produces sixteen pounds of DDGs, and it produces one gallon of corn syrup. That same bushel of corn will be able to also produce two gallons of methanol. So that methanol with the demand that is in the shipping industry, there's no way we can produce, out-produce the demand, that methanol is actually going to be worth more than the ethanol. So this is a win for the landowners because when you deal with the law, we have several laws, four seventy-nine B, uh, six eight point two one, six eight point two two, that all deal with eminent domain. The common thread is that it has to be, uh, convenient and necessary. Well, if we have other options that create more economic development than sequestration, and it doesn't require eminent domain, then the pipelines are neither convenient or necessary. So what I'm looking at is, it took me a long time to find a, an attorney that was skilled in eminent domain. Um, I found him, his name is Char, uh, David Charles, he's with me, uh, Evan, uh, Evan and Mick Cormick. And I gave, I talked to Roger earlier, and I gave him his contact. And what I'm really looking for from you guys is just to do the first step, to have Roger talk to, uh, Mr. Charles and find out if there is a, uh, conflict of interest in any of his clients with the county of Cassuth. And, um, discuss this possible case and see if you'd want to be interested. I, I was the one who talked Woodbury County into going along with you with Timothy Whipple, and that is more of a defensive move. I firmly believe that if, if our counties are going to represent their people, probably gonna get sued. And Timothy Whipple is an expert in the zoning side of things, and I think it's wise that you're, you're, I retained him because companies that come in later may, if, you know, it's gonna be harder as the time gets filled up. And I think this is more of an offensive move, this is not a way to just regulate where the pipelines goes, this, this can stop the pipelines, and it can also increase your economic development a lot. Do you have any questions?
I guess my question would be is, how do you correlate the two together in a short timeframe? Because we're talking August already for the Iowa Utilities Board to act, start acting.
The Iowa Utilities Board is only really part of this, I'm a firm believer that the Iowa Utilities Board is a done deal. It was, the governor chose which way she wanted this to go, and, um, the way that this case would be geared would be specifically to the Iowa Supreme Court. If you take Putney versus the IUB, where Putney lost was that there was no other option. And there are other options here. The other thing is, this also does, it, it does us no good to kill the pipeline if we kill our ethanol plants along with it. This gives the ethanol plants the same story as the pipeline does, so that they can still sell their ethanol at a premium.
I guess one question I have on that is, has there been any contact from this company with the ethanol plants here?
Oh, this particular plant, I do not know, I don't actually work for them, I know they've talked to a lot of ethanol plants, but I can't tell you if they've talked to the specific ethanol plant. I know that they don't have an agreement with that plant, and that's why their name isn't mentioned in the.
Do you, do you talk directly to this Randy Roy co-founder?
Yeah.
Okay. Could I get his contact info?
Yeah.
There's, there's your website.
I see his email, yeah.
So your goal, I mean, I think the idea is intriguing, but your goal would be to, um, have enough counties on board that would want to buy into, or not buy into, but support a, an industry, a new sort of industry, um, and therefore eliminate the need for a sequester, or carbon sequester pipeline. I mean, and that's kind of.
I'm not, I'm not technically anti-pipeline.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I just being clear.
Yeah, I, I am anti-sequestration. I'm, I'm sorry, taking a valuable commodity, sticking it in the holy ground is really stupid. And, and that's why the only the federal government would pay to do, so that's where dumb ideas go to get funded. But, um, yes, on, on your point, I, I want to, I want to add value to something that we already have here. This is a natural resource and should not leave our state without adding value to it. And my, my thought is, if we get enough counties involved, it cuts the cost of legal. You know, it would be the first county to be contacting Mr. Charles, and, you know, everything's negotiable, and like I told Roger, please negotiate. And, and I surely expect you to not agree to anything until there's a certain number of counties that would agree to that, and that's what I intend on doing, is going to counties like this and, and trying to get more and more counties involved.
Where is, where is your home county, Woodbury County?
Uh, Sioux City.
I mean, where are they at in the process as far as?
Sioux City is, Sioux City, I, I talked them into, uh, hiring Timothy.
Yeah, and the intervention.
Um, Sioux City is a very unique case because they don't have an ethanol plant. However, they have two pipelines that are bringing all the CO2 from Nebraska into their county. So when Carbon Sink did a letter of intent with them, it was for a mega plant in the Port Neal industrial park. Um, very few Iowa counties have an industrial park that can handle a plant that size. Um, and that's where I really started with this, when I contacted Urban Snake, I said, I've got the perfect site for you. And they're like, yeah, 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 they had looked for places to put a mega plant, really couldn't find one. Well, finally, it took a lot of talking, but I got a look at it on Google Earth, and they're like, why are there so many transmission lines coming in and out of this park? Well, there were four coal plants there at one time, there's only two now. So, but that, there are very few places where a mega plant really works because it requires too much electricity and too much water. Um, by spreading it out across the state, it makes it a whole lot easier for met americans to fly power into it.
But it seems to me, ultimately, this whole pipeline business is gonna end at the government's desk, she's the one that's gonna decide whether this goes forward or not. And I guess this, the place for a lot of this, like this, this would be a great thing for you to take right down to, you know, to her and talk to her about, because she's, she's the one that's gonna ultimately decide what this thing has, it doesn't.
That video you saw where Jim McPhee gave that, when he, he talked to, Kim Reynolds got an award at the Ethanol Banquet at that same meeting, and he talked to her alone for twenty-five minutes before he gave that, that speech. So she's fully aware of this. Um, I believe this is going to end up at the Iowa Supreme Court, and they will decide it. Um, because it doesn't much matter which way the IUB goes, they're gonna get sued. It doesn't much matter where any, it, every, there's gonna be losses, this is gonna make the lawyers rich. But it's the game we gotta play, it's the world we live in today, it's sad, but that's the case, you know, but, um, I, I think to put up something that gets our ethanol plants what they need, gets our property owners their rights, and it, uh, increases our economic development, that's a win-win-win. You know, there's not many times in life you get those.
I appreciate you bringing the idea to us, I, I, we, we always, I think, we appreciate ideas considering economic growth versus just being on the defensive and at least looking into things. And yeah, thanks for being here.
Would, would you kind of feel like, uh, Roger?
I think we put it on the agenda for next week for.
We're discussing this anyway, so let's discuss it next week.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll probably do a little research before next week.
It's great to call me.
Do you have contact or?
Um, Roger has my contact, I can make it available to all of you. Um, and, uh, I actually am on the agenda, Sioux County next week, so I won't be able to be here next week. But, um, is there a possibility that he could at least call them to find out that whether you have a conflict or not? That might be worth knowing before you actually put it on the agenda.
Yeah, well, we have to put it on the agenda, we can dismiss it off the agenda, but we can't talk about it unless we.
Yeah.
Get it on our head of time, so.
All right.
Yeah, and your phone number?
Seven one two, eight seven zero, nine seven one five.
Great.
It was Doyle.
Doyle Turner.
Turner.
What was the last four?
Uh, last seven one five.
You're just a little slow today there.
Well, usually, when they, somebody asks my last four, I almost give you my social.
Well, I wouldn't know the rest of it, so.
Yeah, thanks, Doyle. Anybody else got anything on this subject?
He's talking about Soren, they had it up CLG.
Did they?
Yeah, they're talking about, uh, I can't remember his name, Attila, I don't know if you heard part of it, they were talking about how they can bring a plant, and it'll be up and going in, it says six to nine months, that there's gonna be plants around here that will be making nothing wrong. But it wasn't on radio, I was gonna get this for me. It's been a lot of some radio, this gentleman talks about.
It's nothing new, they have made methanol out of CO2 for years, but it's, it's the selling of the product that's been short.
Well, methanol is actually the fifth largest traded commodity in the world. Um, but this is green methanol, and it, up until recently, you know, it now has way more value than regular. And it, up until recently, you know, it now has way more value than regular methanol.
But they said this morning they put aviation fuel back here.
This is for ships. They can actually make, they can actually use CO2 to make aviation fuel. And the Air Force is doing that currently. They are doing tests on that fuel, on synthetic jet fuel right now. Like I said, this stuff has a lot of value. That process is is much newer. And it's not economically viable right now. But as we know, the Air Force doesn't really care if it's economically viable or not. They can do it anyhow.
Rich. Good discussion this morning, I got. Right now, it's now been called cap CO2. That's putting the equipment in Illinois in-house. So this is right down. I'm here, so you have to ask yourself a couple of questions. These plants can be three times more profitable. But this gentleman was talking about doing this. So who has paid for the pipeline? Somebody's gotta pay for it. And it's not gonna, unfortunately, if our rent of the Iowa's economy, you're paying, hiding, going nowhere. When something down the ground, so he's right on as far as that goes. And first, the big shipping, bigger European Union. I mean, they're, they're all out to get this methanol. So, yeah, I think they're gonna be designing ships. So this is right, right on track here. But the other thing we have to ask ourselves, what happens when the spike pipe goes in and we have disruption? And it gets killed, it gets killed. It's only gonna be nothing but hurt this industry and the lawsuits will be coming. Uh, they have rentals on the record in Stu. Some have wanted sequestration, maybe two weeks later she has one. And about all the safety people, the lawsuits will be coming. Who's gonna lock it in that pipeline? And so these are the things, so I think it's even, it's only the right thing to do, but it's a good business thing to do. So I'd rather share with people, I think.
Casey, the question making, the plan that's going to give you guys the plan. What I understand, you guys are kind of scared of going with the plan because you're gonna get sued. Well, the governor already went ahead and agreed with this. Can't the county sue the governor?
You can sue anybody, but you know, can you win?
Yeah.
And who's gonna pay all the attorney fees? Go ahead.
I've got copies of the article that was in Saturday's four dots paper concern, so I think that pretty much agrees with what he says. In between the lines, it sounds like our governor is in the pocket in this, some of the pipeline thing. But in addition to that, I did some research and I'm, I'm trying to at a disadvantage to do that because the only internet out where I live and I have to do it on a smartphone. But there are at least three national foundation type groups that are willing to fight eminent domain. And they aren't like some of these small little lawyers. The one that sounds the best to me is this Institute for Justice. It has several offices in the United States. It has a twenty million dollar budget to fight something like this. It's all pro bono. It doesn't cost nothing. They've won twelve thousand cases against eminent domain. And on the back of this, I've got their website where you can look that up. There's two more. There's one called Pacific Legal Foundation. And one called Mountain State's Legal Foundation. And both of those are interested in fighting government misuse of eminent domain. So I think if if someone does go ahead and and try and get eminent domain through the Iowa Utilities Board. It sounds like a place like this is something you'd wanna get on your side to help fight without jeopardizing your finances because they are all pro bono. It doesn't cost anything to have them fight. And it sounds like they're anxious to fight. Well, I'll leave this over there on the table for anybody that has, pick one of these up that wants it. And on the back, it has the the websites where you can look up this Institute for Justice and the Pacific Legal Foundation and this Mountain State's Legal Foundation. There, you know, it sounds, that's substantial organizations that are really interested in fighting something like this. And they've, they've got huge contributions from a lot of these wealthier people that are opposed to government intervention in so many of these different things. So it sounds like something that would really be paid to get them involved in something like this. It's gonna go to the point to where, you know, hopefully, and I have no idea how they would do this, but my, my thinking would be like if they would turn around and they've sued several government, they've had ten cases before the Supreme Court of the United States. They did lose one on a vote of five to four on eminent domain. But they've won several other cases throughout the country.
I don't disagree with you, but I think it'd be best if you had concerned citizens form a group and get in contact with them. It wouldn't really be up to the board of supervisors to do that.
Well, that's why I think, you know, people should look this up and research it.
That's my hard place.
When people, they get enough people contact and the more people they get contact, then the more interest they're probably gonna have to take in this song.
You're gonna have to have a, a group of people get together and sign your name on a petition.
Right. Or if you look on the, they've got, you know, we're an individual protest and then, no. So anyway, I'll leave this over here and anybody that wants, that has, that's how he can.
Your point on the county involvement. The county is one of the entities that does have the right of eminent domain. And according to Kilo versus New London and Putney versus I U B. You would have some rights of eminent domain for economic development purposes. So you would, you have a very valid say in the state on when we shouldn't do that eminent domain also. So the case that I'm trying to talk you into is actually you using your voice on eminent domain to say, let's, don't use eminent domain because we can get economic develop, greater economic development through other alternatives. So that's why I'm coming to counties is because yes, I think the individuals have a case here. But the counties have a very strong case because of your ability to also get an immediate.
We'd have a stronger case because of economic development, keeping industry in the running than
than just saying.
Than just saying no.
Yep.
You're correct. Stacy?
Yeah, you know, I just unfortunately, the pipeline has brought a bunch, I mean, it's gonna be lawsuit crazy is what's gonna happen. And we as a county can either sit on the defense, right? Just wait for something to happen. And then we're like, now we, now we're gonna have to pump this money. You know, the other unfortunate was we've had Summit Navigator sitting in our corner through all of our meetings. And they heard you guys at the last, you know, meeting that they were all here, that you were afraid that you, you guys were gonna get sued because of this ordinance passing.
I don't know, but anybody said that.
Well.
Maybe somebody said it, but that's really not correct.
Right? It was implied. Well, then you guys get a letter. Is that correct? That they sent a threatening letter?
Well, that's normal.
Right. Okay, so that's.
That's not abnormal. That's all.
Point is that all of a sudden, we already have the threatening letters already starting. And so, you know, our, our voices from the people of this county are more so that if the family would get hurt, and of course, we're taking away farmland from good farmers around here. The lawsuits are gonna come back to the county anyway when it comes to a family getting hurt or if something happens, right? A rupture. We all trust that our supervisors are going to protect the people. Your guys' job is to protect us citizens in this county. So now if you know that we have a way to economically boost our county, why not Cassoue County, being the largest county, take the lead on this and start working with Carbon Saint? That's why we say on that video. Let's take the lead on this. And we know that other counties, Doyle's going around and talking to them. Let's push together. Remember, we talked about this at the last meeting, that instead of leaving other counties out to dry, say, well, let's see what happens to them first. And if they tank, well, then we know not to jump on that bandwagon. Let's take the lead and let's show them that we strongly believe that we're not only gonna protect our citizens, but we can help Iowa's economy as a whole. You guys get to take that lead on that. This would be an honorable thing for Cassoue County to do.
Best, better place would be to take it to our economic development office and give this information to, to her, to them. Because she's, we have a very strong economic development office here in Bellweld. She's the one who takes the lead role of monitoring stuff. And she'll, she'll contact those people, probably put meetings together.
Yeah, I think if you guys take that letter of intent and talk to her about that. Do it from a supervisor role, because that's gonna show that you guys care about this community. Remember, people don't care how much you know. They wanna know how much you care. So this is where you guys can take the lead, instead of always putting it back on us citizens to go talk to the governor, go do this, go talk to economic development. Supervisors, go do it. You're gonna show this county that you really do care about your role in this county.
But it's a policy to think that Cassoue County is going to stop a pipeline that goes across five states if they approve economic development. Eminent domain, I'm sorry.
Well, um, I think if you look at Putney versus I B, it lays out a formula to do precisely that.
Right.
And and that essentially is what we're trying to do is follow that formula.
What was the case law you just mentioned? Putney versus what?
Putney versus Iowa or Utilities Board. And Putney lost that case.
Yeah.
Because Putney did not have an alternative. And couldn't prove, see, the real, the the pipeline says that they're the safest way to handle CO2. And I agree with that. But that's not the real question. Real question is, is there a reason to transport CO2?
Is there a real reason to even capture CO2?
Well, then, that's legitimate, yes. But when we lost the IRA, when the IRA went through, then this is what we, we have to deal with. But at least we can turn this in so that our federal dollars are producing a product that we can sell and add value to our product.
My point is we have stupid fixing stupid.
What?
We have stupid fixing stupid at some point. I mean, CO2 point four percent in the atmosphere has never been a problem, never will be.
No, no.
So by fixing.
Not back, does though.
No.
No.
We got a lot of.
With so much emphasis on not having this pipeline is gonna jeopardize our farmers. When right now, what various numbers you see thirty to fifty percent of our corn is going for the production of ethanol. Why would that change if we don't have that pipeline? If that's the way it is now, what's gonna, not having that pipeline outside is gonna change that?
Lots of theories on that, but.
Thinking it sound like, oh, if we don't get this pipeline, the farmers are gonna go broke. They aren't gonna get, be able to sell any uh, corn for ethanol. Well, they're doing it now. What's gonna change that's gonna stop them from doing it the way they're doing it right now? Sounds like a bunch of BS to me.
Well, Russian embargo back in the seventies did the same thing.
Yep.
Killed the corn market. Yeah, some of you remember that.
The simple answer is federal government policies for the carbon intensity score they talk about. But, I mean, not here to debate that, but that's.
Way it is now.
Well.
Look at the administration we have and you have your answer. Not up to me, but.
We have a big agenda today, so I think we're gonna get started.
Do you want us to save for the meeting? Or would you, would you allow us to go into the workroom and let Doyle talk to some of these people?
I think, yeah, the oldest, the old boardroom.
Would you check with our office and make sure nobody has it reserved for this morning? And if they don't, then absolutely.
They know.
Yeah. I'd like to make one final comment, just as, uh, over the past few weeks, there's a lot of conversation that goes on, a lot of, a lot of rumors that fly around, a lot of, you know, in regards to our discussions, our motions here in the boardroom. Please, you know, if you are concerned, give me a call. Give another supervisor a call, see where we're at. You know, I don't wanna badmouth any media organizations, but there've been articles written around the area that just aren't true. And and people say things that kind of misconstrue the stories and and stuff. So just, just please, and it was not our, you know, I'll go on media, but just, just please reach out to us and and wait, I'd be happy to talk with them if you so, yeah. But thank you for being here today and thank you Doyle for sharing with you that, so.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Wow, she's coming back in a minute. We'll give her two seconds here.
There, I got a question real quick. That people call me and ask me, you're taped in the meetings. I'll tell them they're not. There's other peonies where I can be sitting watching the media at home right now. Has this meeting going on? They want to like Sioux County can't do that.
They're uploaded to, uh, what?
It'd be live instead of after the fact.
So why is not Cassoue that way? They're wondering, sometimes they gotta wait a day to depends on if they wanna be able to sit there and watch it right now so that if they had to come in, they could come in.
I think we had a number of conversations about this before, while you were on the board even. So I think you should know the answer to that.
I was told the base gonna be, I didn't want to do it. But why can't the other counties do it and this one can? Is what I'm asking. They said that they can watch it later or they can watch it live, either way. And for us, it's always watch it later.
It's all later.
Yes, why can't we do it live also?
Did you vote to not do it live when you were on the board?
You would.
Yeah.
Want to not do it live when you were on the board? Hopefully, that's a discussion that you were part of and.
Yeah, that's, that's been hashed over a number of times.
That way, I don't care what you say, because you don't like me and I don't like you. And I'll take grades from them, but not from you. You are elected official. You are supposed to show me your respect. You understand?
That goes two ways.
Yeah, give me some respect, son. I respect the rest of them.
Thank you for checking.
Is it, is it open?
Yes, it is, so.
Yeah, go ahead and and use the, use the old boardroom.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Ernie. Please put those videos.
I did want to.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
They say they want to.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated June thirteenth, twenty-three.
The mood.
Carter?
Second.
Second judge? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. We had a bunch of claims that everybody had a chance to look at. I'm in your boulder. Any discussion on any of the claims? Seeing none, would you like to make a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims? Josh, second?
I'll second.
Stecker? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I'll start passing. The blood.
Okay. Blood pressure.
That was sounding good. I gotta eat salt once in a while, raise my blood pressure.
I heard pickle juice is supposed to help with that.
Air's working good today, Will.
So.
So.
Texas County couldn't learn that I was. Well, one county has tried to stop. Then through the I U V and they had no block at all.
Is that on this or something?
Yeah, it's on mouse, but. Case. Cases have never been won by the counties.
That would have been before the members got changed.
I think these members are all pretty.
So I've signed today. Just a couple. I feel like. I got stands I have, I'm on the way down. Is that the last one?
Yeah.
You just needed some more practice down in your hands.
I got enough practice in the military.
We don't want your ball.
Jack's out here.
You don't feel this thing?
We'll be sending her a little bit.
Dan, are you ready?
Yes.
I didn't even see him.
Yeah, he's been, he's been hiding behind the pole, right? That's why.
Yeah. I thought we was going to have to call you from across the street.
All right. Did you get the email from last Friday? I sent out. Okay, great. All right, well, this would be my metrics for, uh. The end of, uh, May, uh. So the office had sixty-five phone calls and ninety-five messages. Uh, sixty-eight walk-ins, thirty-one scheduled appointments, uh, with one of those being out of office. We did do a, a veterans transport and we got, uh, seven hearing gates repaired for the veterans. Um, currently tracking eleven hundred and sixty-two records. I've currently got fifty active claims in the VA system, five that are ready for decision. Uh, twenty-one that are under development, uh, currently working on. And, uh, got one supplemental and, uh, was able to get one healthcare reenrollment done. As far as training, I did complete the national training virtually that was conducted at, uh. Madison, Wisconsin, I'm just awaiting for my C D U's. Also completed some suicide, uh, training as well at the end of May. And, uh, getting ready to go do some district training in Marshalltown. Part of that involves touring the Iowa Veterans Home, take a look at the, the changes there and seeing what, uh. What's been recently done through the leadership of, uh, the new county. Um, we do have an upcoming salute to veterans, many of the girls at the Cassuth Speedway, uh, in July, so I'd catch that flyer. So that'll be something I'll be looking at here next month. Um, update on our commission status, it did receive seven applications. For, uh, to fill the commission vacancies. Uh, the interview process is actually going to take place this Thursday from five to seven. All of the applicants that the commissioner, who's speaking, could have been telephonically contacted. And I sent them a letter of confirmation last Friday, so we're still tracking on that.
Are you holding on?
Yes, yes, but. And, uh, the goal again is to try and get them sworn in, uh, before the next meeting in July. Uh, that the commissioners meet. Now, as a side note, I do have one commissioner that is working. Her resignation from a standpoint of her medical condition. And I asked her to write a letter, uh, to the board for that formally. So we're looking at actually filling three positions instead of just the two.
Okay.
And I'll, more to follow on that as I, I know. I'm currently drafting the quarterly report for your review for the month of July. And I've got about a ninety-five percent draft on my, uh, state grant monies, get ready to. Iowa Department Veteran Affairs. Um, with this update, I gave you kind of some highlights, just kind of the big bullet points, uh. From the national training conference that I went to. Um, and the key thing that I kind of want to take away from that is legislatively speaking. Uh, we have to go back to the well again, there was some legislation that was being worked on at the national level. Or federal monies to the tune of fifty million dollars was being asked for. And that each state would receive a cut of that to help, uh, with the local county veteran service offices. Uh, currently, there's a Senate File one O six and a House Resolution nine, nine eighty-four, very similar. Uh, the Senate file talks about fifty million dollars for five years and that no state may receive more than ten percent. And then, of course, counties in that state would have to apply for that, that money. The, uh, the House Resolution one is twenty million dollars for five years with five percent allocated to the state. So slightly a smaller cut. Don't know where that's going to land yet. The National Legislative Committee is still working on some of that. Of course, with the way current, current things are, that may or may not happen anyway, but that was a key takeaway. Um, another key takeaway was there currently, uh, VA is about sixty-six thousand cases behind in appeals. Things are moving really, really slow. And so I have a lot of veterans who have what active claims or, or surviving spouses that. Are not my, my telephone calls are picking up because they're like, hey, I haven't heard anything. Do you have any updates for me? So processing times have, have really slowed down. And there are critical shortages to process those claims within VA at my, at level higher than myself. But as the secretary has pointed out, he is limited to the overall exact number that he's been fired. Uh, to put into the system to help mitigate some of that. And what he asked for versus what he received was about fifty percent. So he, he was looking for about four thousand employees, he got two thousand instead. So I guess two thousand is better than nothing. So, but with that, uh, another key takeaway that, uh. The secretary has charged the V S Os with trying to improve is. We have nine million veterans out of nineteen million veterans total that are enrolled in VA healthcare. He would like to see that increased. Ninety percent of those folks are men. So he wants to reach out to the female veterans and talk to those, you know, and, and see what we can do about getting them enrolled as well. Um. The generation of veterans such as the World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, and my generation have, have more trust. With the VA, however, post nine eleven veterans do not. So they're trying to address those issues and, and mitigate what's causing some of that. Right now, too, if you have a veteran that is currently rated by VA and has to file a claim under the PAC Act. They have a thirty-two percent chance, thirty-two times more likely chance of either getting approved. Or an increase or staying the same as opposed to a denied. So that review process is actually improving in terms of the actual service connection and nexus of those conditions. And the veteran being ranked against them, so. The rest of that's self-explanatory and all that's quite a bit of stuff there, but, uh. Subject to your questions, that's, that's all I have. July started to build up already. Just, we're not even on the June yet, so. Plenty of stuff to do.
Job security.
Certainly hope so, Roger. Certainly hope so.
Any questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Yeah.
We are up to discussion. On equipment purchases for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and Will, your name's on this?
It is.
Yep, it says Will Strucker.
You've already put it in the budget, you just said I had to bring it before the board, so it could be official for me. Or the trailer and new scrubber.
Any questions for Will?
We already discussed them.
No questions?
Where, where do you have? You have, or, uh. Where are we getting trailer from?
I should.
I should, yeah.
You have quotes or purchase prices on those?
Yeah, I gave you when we did the budgets.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't.
You didn't tell us what he was going to do with the old trailer, I guess.
Well, I was going to ask that when you were, after you approved this, then, then there's something to do with the old trailer. What do you want to do with it?
I suppose you put it out on, um, sealed bids as the safest way to get rid of it.
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
I, yeah, I would hear, I would think you need maybe that one to focus and get some money, but.
Yeah, wow, we'll put it out on bids, see if anybody wants it.
Yeah.
And then, that's what we usually do with county equipment.
Okay. It, that's got to run for two weeks, correct? In the paper?
I think.
We do. We've done baskets, go field site for all our equipment, got some very, very good value. Uh, everyone's heard public caution for a week, two weeks, whatever, and then it's small number bid and, and so. Get through the handle. And there's no, they take care of financial, that, that, or something to send your chat.
Don't, don't look at me, look at them.
Yeah.
And not my, what do you picture, so.
I was going to put the trailer and just get rid of it locally.
Doesn't matter to me, that's fine.
Yeah, I just assume, just put it on, in the paper and get rid of it locally.
You got it.
Everybody probably be happier. Somebody like to make a motion that we. Purchase equipment for twenty-three, twenty-four for. Four dollars. Jack? And Carter?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Does that include putting the old trailer up on bids, your motion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Thanks, Willie.
You're welcome.
Josh Wagner, you are on this time sheet software. But you're going to let him start?
Yeah.
You are?
Okay, so two weeks ago, um. Department heads were in and we're talking about possibility of adding time sheet tracking software. Uh. At that time, you asked can get pricing for what the additional cost would be. We're looking at about a total of six thousand dollars per year. Um, and a built-in a tiny bit for inflation there, pricing. And that would be for a total of ninety-four licenses. It would not include secondary road crew outside of the office. Um, that is an additional, uh, annual total of just short of five thousand dollars. Um. And all those new EMS folks as well, so.
Five thousand more if the road department.
No, no, five thousand from what we currently pay right now for.
Five thousand more than would be correct.
We already have, uh, three departments that are using the software, so. Uh, and again, this is a department head decision, it's not the IT department bringing this to you. I was just asking, so.
Yep.
That's what we're.
Um, in regards to the question I had asked you if this would work with the pay scale we are on now. Um, did you do any further checking on that, like the, the timeframe?
It will not work with prepaid, we'd have to fix the prepaid.
That's.
Yes, uh, yeah, that is correct. My apologies.
Oh, when we would implement this, we would have to. Address the prepaid situation.
And the six thousand dollars does not include the fee for solutions, right?
Correct.
So there's an additional, what was that?
A lot of time charge between thirty-five hundred and six thousand dollars, we don't know for sure. Depends on how long, uh, Solutions, which is the company that does all of our software for the county, including the payroll portion. Uh, that integration, so. What's that?
We said doesn't work with the current, uh, prepaid, so all the, all the people are using it right now, using it.
They're not turning it in, they're just using it internally. So they're just doing it in their department, they're not doing anything like it.
I wouldn't see a reason to approve this until we fix the prepaid then. That's a way.
Do you?
Or I'm sure we're going to do that.
Do you have a better feel on how this would?
Yeah.
Impact and how, if, I mean, time that would be saved or anything?
Yeah, so after talking to the, my department about it, um. If, if we implement this and, and hook it up to Solutions, it'd be more beneficial excluding secondary road if all departments do it. Because otherwise it's going to be too hard, you know, it's going to be repetitive and knowing what departments are using this, what, what departments are doing people, you know, so, so. To make it more efficient for our department, it's going to be easier if all departments do it, not just here and there. So I don't know if that nine, the number of ninety-four licenses includes everybody but secondary road or not.
Yes, that.
It is everybody.
And conservation is up there as well. Conservation.
So is, do you have a? Estimate that this is going to save X number of hours or anything?
I don't know that it will save, the time that will be saved will be in putting vacation sick time. That would be the only time savings really, I don't think it's going to save a lot of it.
I guess I'm usually in favor of, um, updating things with the current time, but. For five thousand a year, that's a never-ending subscription. If it's not going to actually save us something. Be, uh. Justifiable, I don't, I don't know that it makes a lot of sense.
Well, I said, this would fix the prepaid, it's a, it's a new coin anyway. I, I don't, I have the same reason I put it up, that we can use.
My, my comments regardless of that, I mean, it's, it's an ongoing expense, there is the one upfront on top of that, but. Not something you're going to get rid of down the road.
General consensus of the board is to wait and fix, uh, prepaid. Before we make a decision on going to time sheet software.
Think that would be fine.
Is that your general consensus or you want to vote on it or is that just the decision that we make unanimously?
Can discuss it after we take care of all, it's fine.
I'm okay with discussing it in there, but I'm not.
I don't like to vote to do nothing.
Clarification, and just make sure we're on the same page. EMS does want to move forward with it to keep track of their hours significantly.
Hmm, I think, yeah, go ahead.
Want to make sure we're.
Yep.
That there won't be anything but solutions for that one.
Correct, will not be integration with our payroll system. It would be suffering.
Yeah, they can sure use it. Yep. Track hours, I think it makes a lot of sense there because it's a very, very scheduled company discussion, yeah.
You want to make a motion for that and stuff like that?
Oh, that's, I don't think that.
That's up to department heads, right, I mean, to, right, right now. That would now just fall under their budget, so.
Right. It comes under.
That wouldn't be a great one. Five thousand, that's either, no.
No. Yeah, that's consensus of the board?
Yep.
So. Just let the minutes show that the consensus of the board is. Not act on this at the present time, but to let Phil use it for tracking.
We are ready for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, you want to call Luke?
Just in.
Just in.
Okay. You're ahead of me.
Yes, we got twenty eighty with the historical society too.
Yeah.
Luke was coming in.
He said he was coming in.
Luke, yep.
Luke, you are up.
Good morning. Agreement with Cassuth County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Yes, uh, per our auditor, uh, recommendation from a year or two ago. Um, uh, we should have a twenty eighty, uh, agreement with the board for the distribution of the funds that you provide to the Soil and Water. Conservation District, so, um, twenty eighty that I had typed up, uh, not unique, I kind of used, uh, language from. Some of the others put that together, so. I didn't know if you've had a chance to review it or if you have any questions on it.
It was in our folder, yeah.
Okay.
We're good. I would move to approve the twenty eighty.
I was going to say, I did send it to Todd for, um, approval both of them, but I hadn't heard anything back, so.
Do you want to call on Jack quick?
I was just opening my email to get it. I see, I.
I'll try.
See it on twenty. Historical, but I don't see anything. The soil conservation, so.
I'll save the answers, please. You guys have any big? Projects that you're working on in the county this year?
Um, still working to get.
Hey, Todd, I'm bored, um, did you look at the twenty-eighty for your career soles? Uh, Cusworth County Soil and Water Conservation District, any issues?
Down there.
Okay, perfect, that's all we're gonna double check on it quick.
Get that accomplished first, but all of that funding, um, was awarded to a grant and, uh, the, uh, water shed. So, which is nice, so that part's all.
Historical society, next.
It's, uh, fundamentally used to help fund the rest of the county.
Oh, okay.
Through across these, whether it's, uh, fridges, large cupboards.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thanks, mate.
That's what we have for a big project on the.
We're good.
Okay.
Share, so. Unresponsive continued.
Sure. Are you doing any? More bus tours and things this summer?
Any what?
Any more bus tours and stuff going around the county this?
I don't think we have one, uh, scheduled for yet this year, so. Um, that went over pretty well. So. Once we get a few more projects, instructed, the whole thing is to do that.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah.
For that, yeah, so.
Yeah, he didn't have any issues if that was a change.
He said that, I forgot to attach the attachment to it, but I told him.
You made a motion. Yeah, I moved approved the twenty-eighty agreement with. Soil, Water Conservation District.
I'll second.
Uh, motion and second on the floor, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, Luke.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have the twenty-eighty agreement between Cusworth County and Historical Society.
And we had already had the one that was yearly, this just changed to make it perpetual, so.
Is everybody?
Basically the same thing.
Fine with making it perpetual, or do you wanna keep it yearly?
None of our others are yearly, this is the only one.
Yeah.
They just. Thought that it needed to be, that's the only reason they had it.
Remember those stories.
You wanna make the motion then?
Yeah.
Being you're the member, you wanna second it?
Yeah.
Any more discussion on twenty-eighty agreement?
Not an actual one, dude.
Historical Society. If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried unanimously. Bill, you're up. First thing we have is staffing and time card policy.
So that policy we, um, had on the agenda back to first part, may. Uh, Tammy, Donovan, and myself had a conference with the payroll attorney. Went through, um, some items in that. When I made my changes, for some reason, part of me changed, part of me did not save. Um. And it started yesterday, I was fucking out of it too quickly, and it wasn't auto-saving by the time I got done. And so, there's a copy that I put you guys' packet, still had. Some wrong language in the, um. Paragraph regarding the, uh, when the time cards were due. That has been corrected, then the other thing was on the, the effective date of July second versus the July one effective day. And then Tammy, um, also had a concern with some language under the, um. The compensation time, compensation time. And basically what we did is just remove that second part of that first paragraph, Tammy. I just left it say as employee may elect to receive comp time. Um, or paid leaving lower their work time and employee may accrue battles compensation time up to fifty-six hours period, then we deleted the rest of that, that paragraph, so.
So you left that on?
Yeah. We're not trying to rewrite the handbook, um. With this, so, you know, if anything, those are giant handbook, and it's just up to, um, be rid of it. That, does that clarify that okay with you?
Yeah.
Guys. Okay. So that's, um.
There was just confusion on interpreting it, so I, you know, that was the only.
And I, and I get that, my intent was one way, it should be interpreted a different way, so we just took that, that sense out completely, so. As far as I know, there should be, you know, there should like say we have reviewed out the payroll track, so. And that should be good to go. Has been through the advisory council. So I guess, are there any questions on, on that, that you meant?
The underlying part on. Changes in policy.
Yeah, he did change that, uh, in new copy that he sent.
Okay.
Looking at that little copy, but, um. He did do it to non-material and material, I, I don't know what the difference is. But that's up to you guys.
I think that's mostly with the scheduling and stuff, um. I don't, I don't know if that would ever come to fruition, but. I don't have an issue with it, I guess.
Same question.
About scheduling.
Entry, it's non.
Non-material changes to.
Temporary deviation.
That's just, that's the language that we had with city policy. Um. I'm fine with whatever, you want me to come back, if we have a change, I'm fine with that, uh, no, it's just the language that we had with them. With this doc, with the city that. They had the ability to make minor changes.
And we had to implement, just depending on staffing levels, I don't know, you know, given time or demand, if there's an event. You know, things might just have to shift a little bit, so the right coverage is why we had added that in our policy.
Well. I, I guess to me, you wouldn't need it because it only makes sense, I don't know. That you have to change scheduling, you gotta change scheduling.
Free.
That means, you sent it out on last night, right?
Yes.
So, so that copy that he sent. Last night or time, whenever it was, is different than that one, because that was put in. Yesterday, so there's another.
I figured I could say.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that's a little bit different than the one that he's having. It, it just, it breaks it down.
So you're too quick on your, your.
I guess, I did it again yesterday.
Yeah, cuz he was, he was typing through stuff and it has the auto-save up at the top. But he didn't let the computer sit still long enough to actually save it, so it was waiting for the next change that was coming. And then he'd go off and close out of it and it wouldn't be saved and.
You'd make a poor attorney fail.
But we figured, yeah, once I watched what he was doing, it was a, it was a short diagnosis.
Oh, the computer be back, you're windowed that issue.
Then it'll ask you if you want safe changes.
Well, he, he saved them manually, but the auto-save function, it waits until you're, um, settled and then saves, but.
Okay, it's got like a thirty second. Any, any other questions on staffing and time card policy for the EMS? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve it.
Second. I have a motion and a second, did you get that? Decker and Carter.
Josh.
Josh, I mean.
That's anybody.
Yeah, sorry. I have a motion and second on the floor, any more discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried unanimously.
Yeah, I have a folder, I'll give you two, Tammy.
For us tonight.
Yes. Yes, I have a folder with all the cards.
Okay, thank you.
And the next one is decision approved county emergency medical service. Rate scale.
So this is the rate scale we put together at the last EMS advisory council, so effective, um. In July, and we start billing for services, this is the rates that we will charge, um. Insurance companies for the services that we provide. These are based off recommendations that we received from billing companies, also based on. Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross Grisham contracts will pay us. These numbers are above what all of those providers pay. Because if we have. Like ORCOM or car insurance or some items like that, that pays full rates, we have a chance to make up. A little extra money. So for example, Blue Cross pays like six fifty on the. ELS emergency, we're charging eight hundred, so we're about a hundred fifty dollars over what healthcare charges on our rates. Like you say, we did agree those with the EMS advisory board, went through them line by line, um. That year, anybody ask questions or?
I just get, non-transportation, you got a hundred dollars, you charge that.
Yes.
Normally.
Yes.
Actually, it's. Wasn't it higher than that?
We're charging two hundred. Probably the two hundred is the, the residents that are on Medicaid patients, you know, they only get fifty dollars a month to live on. But we're charging two hundred dollars for, for a service. It shouldn't be burdensome to them people, um. They do have an opportunity to collect fifty dollars of that back from, from their insurance carrier. So, in essence, at a hundred, we'd only be. It would only be out the extra fifty dollars versus the hundred and fifty, so.
And, and part of it's a. Deterrence factor to not abuse the system, um. But still, it's kind of a happy medium, but being a burden.
You wouldn't mind it, prior to us charging that for.
Yeah.
You know, lymphocyst, to put George in my house, to help somebody up. To go to the restroom or to go to the kitchen or whatever, so it wasn't getting abused, it's.
And that's, that's not what.
Right, that's service, right, if you need. Who we need care. So. It didn't deter that some, um. Now, we'll see what happens with this rate then.
Twenty dollars a month?
Yes. Loaded bomb.
Loaded bomb. Okay.
And then the bottom two, very bottom two is something else, we try to address the tier charges. So that's when our, so currently, when we started the system back in twenty-twenty, we weren't charging the, the other services in Cusworth County for our. Our service for, for tiering with them, they were able to bill at the ALS rate, and we just provided that service to them. And we're using tax dollars to pay for that, and we did find out from. Medicare that we cannot do that anymore, we have to charge them something to be able to bill at the ALS rate. So. We're gonna charge fifty dollars to the services in county, uh, that's about what they get reimbursed for, for the tier call. So it kind of washes itself out there, but we'll get that little bit of income back. And then for services that are outside of Cusworth County, the, the kind of going rate for tier charges, two hundred and fifty dollars per. That's if they transport the patient, but we get in their ambulance to assist them, that's what we charge tier for. If we actually take that patient and, and take them to the hospital, then we bill the patient, and we do not charge for the tiered charge. It's only if we jump in somebody's that loses animals to help them, so. A good example, be like West Ben, if they are coming this way and we be, and we jump in their vehicle to help them. Rest with the hospital. I guess when that charge would be occurred.
Any other question? I'll, I'll make motion to approve the.
Decker makes motion to approve. Josh makes the second.
He does.
Any other question? Hearing on all those in favor of approving the Cusworth County emergen- emergency medical services rates, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we're up to, uh, delivery date for the new ambulances.
So, a few weeks ago, we, we accepted bids for the person, the new ambulance, and we were discussing, um, holding on. First of that ambulance till July of twenty-twenty-four. To get through the first budget year, um, due to price increases and. Things that are going on, uh, with chassis. We couldn't see a substantial price increase if we wait, so we have two options, we could. We could purchase the chassis. Uh, we, we do have the available building to buy a twenty-twenty-four chassis, we'd actually own the chassis. Uh, and then we could just, they would hang on to the chassis until we told them to go ahead and build the ambulance. Um, by them holding on to the, the chassis until then. Our warranty would not begin until the ambulance was actually delivered, so it does not begin when we take delivery of the chassis. Instead, begins when we take delivery of the completed ambulance. Uh, but that would lock in a twenty-twenty-four chassis instead of, um, if we push this back, we'll be. Changed into a twenty-twenty-five chassis and possible price increase. Uh, the other option is to, uh, just go ahead and build the ambulance and just take delivery whenever they get it built. It might be. Four, five, six months prior to July first. Uh, the only reason we pushed it back was. Not knowing exactly, you know, first year of a new budget. Where the numbers were gonna fall, um, just felt a little more secure waiting. But we do have the two hundred and twenty-five thousand from ARPA money that's going towards the person, this is an ambulance. So we could take the delivery earlier, uh, avoid the increases and just go and build the ambulance and take delivery at some time in. Calendar year twenty-twenty-four, right, the first part of twenty-twenty-four, rather than July twenty-four, so be a few months earlier. But it'd be in the first budget year instead of the second budget year. We do have a hundred and fifty thousand in our budget for the first year towards, um, capital. Purchases, so the extra over and above what ARPA's paying could come out of that. We would still have money left in that, um. We just have to watch our. Spending for the remainder of this first year, especially with that line, to make sure that we are, aren't short. First year, so. Pause a little bit, cut power, which is the next item on the agenda, is also part of the purchase of that, um. They're also looking at a five to ten percent increase. Come October first. Um. There again, they're also discontinuing, the reason you had two quotes was they was about ten thousand dollars different. The cheaper cot. As being discontinued. So if we wait, we will also, we'll have the ten thousand dollar higher cot plus the five to ten percent price increase on top of that. So that equipment, if we do not purchase the ambulance, we could prepay and actually take ownership of that equipment, we would just have it. Uh, seen in our facility until we took delivery. So it wouldn't really be a prepay because we're actually purchasing something to take the ownership of, of that item. And we'd actually have it. There's a physical control of that equipment. Once we paid for it. My recommendation is, I would. Let's see, just pursue, let's just buy the truck and be done with it, um. Besides the extra cost we could incur, it's gonna save us a lot of money, that's. These are a couple of the ambulances that we're currently running with.
We still got them all six, all four, yeah.
Yep.
Two of them?
Yep.
They were jumping.
Yeah. We noted that on the inventory.
I don't know if we even wanna take them, you know.
Sign that and.
So we have one ambulance coming in August, the one that the city paid for. And then the second ambulance, which will replace those two vehicles.
Uh, yeah, I know, it's, it's my opinion, that the sooner you get it, get it in service, probably the better, well, we will be financially.
I mean, there's no reason not to, we just thought if we waited till July, we'd have one year's budget under our mouth and. But I'm comfortable with where we're at, and what the projections are, we should be fine.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to purchase.
Just a reminder, that there is no money in that budget until we get taxes, so.
Right.
It, whatever you just might, just wanted to remind you that, until we collect taxes, there will not be any.
We will not spend any money out of there until we. If we will.
Yeah, well, address that on the side of this topic, but yeah.
Yeah.
If there is anything we have to prepay, we can always use money from the ARPA. I don't foresee any prepaying until we take delivery unless it's on the, the cot, that helps us set up companies.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think you're better enough if you would. Wait until we had the money. Instead of. You have to prepay. Hold them off.
I know nothing will be delivered before October.
Okay.
So, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
We're probably looking more like the.
Yeah.
You know, February, March area.
Cause we don't, we don't want Elizabeth to come down on them.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Understood.
Yep. So if you can hold that off that long, till, till there's money in the account, it would work better.
Let's get her name on the.
Yeah. Get your name on.
No less than go from there.
Yep. I would entertain a motion, I mean, I would make the motion for a new. I would entertain a motion, I mean, I would make the motion for the new ambulance purchase.
I'll second it, to move forward right away.
Yeah, to move forward, but with the contention that you're not gonna write any checks until we actually have money in the account. Any more discussion on that? Being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Next thing is, uh. Power cot, Skype.
Hope that was done too.
Well, that's. But that was discussed as with the same thing Phil just talked about.
Yeah, it's sixty two thousand, one hundred and sixty four dollars and forty cents at the present time is what you're telling us.
Well, the other was fifty five. Fifty five dollars and three hundred and eighty seven dollars and seventy cents. We're voting to approve that one.
You're gonna vote that approved to fifty five thousand? Is that your motion?
I'll second.
I'll make the motion. Motion is to approve the fifty five thousand dollar cot. Correct. That would be the older one, not the new one.
Correct.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It won't be paid for until.
Right. Until the money is in the account.
Until funds are available or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then you're still up yet.
Popular today.
We have.
That I'm with the year, we gotta get the stuff wrapped up.
We have a lease agreement.
Yeah, so I, we invited Jacob Jaden, I don't know, are the new guys, uh, just Jacob Jaden with, uh, City Administrator, Steve Algonin. Uh, him and I have worked together for the last three years on EMS and, and to get us to where we're at today, so. Want to thank him for everything that, you know, him and the city have done to get to this point. We didn't have a council meeting last night, uh, with City of Algonia. We did approve, uh, this, this lease agreement, also did approve the, the next item on the agenda, which is the, uh. Uh, to transfer of the, uh, lease agreement, so, hey, one of those asset transferred, it didn't meet with Todd yesterday.
Assignment of EMS leases first for the hospital one.
Right.
Then, then the transition agreement.
Okay, so the assignment lease for the hospital, we did meet, I did meet with the hospital, uh, they had this on their agenda last meeting they had. And discuss this, everything is in order with them. They are meeting tomorrow and they're assigning the, the, this lease agreement tomorrow at the, um, hospital board meeting. It was saying, it was proved last night by the city of Algonia to assign that, um, property or at least. Property or to. It's a ninety nine year lease, began in nineteen eighty four. So we're just, we're just assuming that, that same lease for EMS ability to sit on.
And the stuff that was highlighted was from the city's attorney, Todd did not have any issues with that, so the final version.
So we added in agreement under the title, cause the, the original one just said assignment of lease. Uh, the city's attorney wanted to say assignment of lease agreement. And then down in that, I think it's the second sentence, we also added lease agreement there. Um, just to pertain to the actual, what the original lease was called, which was lease agreement. Then we removed that one sentence and then that whole paragraph number five. And we did present that to Todd yesterday morning, Todd, um, approved that change and, uh, the. Review that was approved last night, the city council was with those changes made. But we need to approve it with the same changes, uh, hospital has that same document as well.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll make that motion to approve.
And I'll second. I have motion by Stacker and a second by Josh. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous. You're not done yet. Are you done now?
No.
No.
Nope.
Last one.
The big one's next. So on the assignment, uh, emergency medical service transition agreement, that's one that we originally tried to write with both ways that we, you know, wanted and Assoue County. Uh, got kind of complicated trying to have three entities involved, plus if we would have had. One change to one of the entities, like the location moved from one of the entities, the whole agreement would cancel. Uh, so made the decision to separate those into two separate agreements, um. Which we continued, you know, trying to work with both communities and, and we're at today, it's just, this wrapping up, you know, going to one. Do have agreement on, on language, it has been presented to the county's attorney, Todd has reviewed this, uh. We, we met them again yesterday morning and, and finalized the couple of those finer changes that we had, just on a couple of wording things. Was presented to Paul Doster, the city's attorney, and it was presented to the city council meeting last night, so. I guess do you have anything you want to bring up about the agreement or, um, you know, we had been talking about.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, kind of just in, in brief, what the agreement does is transfer all city owned assets, uh, to the county effective July. Uh, second at seven AM, so that includes the two, uh, cars, the four ambulances, uh, the one ambulance ordered, uh, that was not yet delivered, uh, still set should be in, in August. As well as the building on the police land, uh, one of the restrictions with that lease is that, that facility can only ever be used for emergency medical services, so. Uh, that can still be assigned, but, uh, you know, that's the use of it. Uh, and then it's all equipment supplies, uh, within the building, vehicles are attached there too. So some of the, the larger items we note and then, uh, kind of the last section, just a snapshot of our, you know, kind of daily rotating inventory. Uh, just kind of as a representation of, this is, you know, kind of a, what's being, uh, transferred in terms of ownership. But, you know, just due to the nature of the service, those amounts, uh, change day to day and when orders arrive, when they're used. Uh, so just included that as a snapshot of when this agreement prepared, this is where we're at, just in city's perspective with all these assets being. Uh, transferred over, we just want to, you know, document. Some of them specifically, but others just kind of juggle with that all at once.
So you're comfortable after ten years if the county votes not to have an ambulance service?
We, we have written this word for text, then coming back, just like text us going in, so they would receive the assets back. Uh, as far as the assets go, there's also a language in there on the financials.
And it's the modern day equivalent, it's not, it's not specific item for.
Inventoryless, modern day equivalent. So.
Yeah.
Or, or, or the financial ability to purchase the modern day equivalent if, if we don't have something, so. We do not see an issue there either way, we should be able to provide this service coming into the county and also provide it to whatever, revert back to the city. Um, the other thing, the only other thing I have to add to this is, you know, we've been talking in the past about, um, what that was financials are for this, this year. Been talking about with how we're gonna be in the rent of this figure because we're paying the less expenses at the end of this fiscal year. Do do great management over the last couple of months, I'm kind of happy to say that we're kind of projecting we're gonna be in luck. So even though we have the extra expenses. So that's, that's a positive for, for our current state is, that could be a lot of dollars, um, it might be pretty close to being even, but. We're kind of predicting that versus being, you, in twenty thirty thousand and red.
You have the number off the top of your head for, um. The call revenue that's outstanding for Algonia, I, I know I asked that yesterday, but then I forgot to ask you when you actually.
Pulled up yesterday and, and it, I couldn't get that, uh, the billing companies website to open up, uh, to have the internet issues or, or website issues, but. I don't have an exact number, I mean, I could estimate probably a couple hundred thousand.
I thought last time we looked, it was between two and three hundred thousand.
Well, and I know some about PCC, the billing company, that's helped because last couple of months, as they have been. Further behind than they should be, and so we've been on them, like, hey, we need to get these currents so we can make accurate projections and, you know, with this transition coming up, so. They ramped that up and so we, some of the projections we have, you know, it's kind of, we can make assumptions, but they're assumptions, so now that we have actuals, you know, some of that revenue that was outstanding, that's coming, that's been at a higher rate and. What we're interested in, so say that's coming at a higher rate, our, our council receivables probably a little bit.
Probably coming down.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable saying there's probably, you know, at least still around that two hundred thousand dollar number that's out.
Just so everyone's got a idea of it.
So that's, that's gives us some revenue coming in right away, instead of waiting until October for our first tax dollars. It's kind of the idea of how this was written, so, cause we knew we wouldn't have any money till October, but this gives us money coming in. Also, whenever we revert back, it gives them money to begin with as well, coming back the other direction.
So you don't think we'll need an internal loan to get you started, or do you wanna hold that just in case?
If we may have pulled that just in case, because I don't know, you know, as they ramp things up to get things cleared up. You know, how much money's going to come in, how much of that two hundred thousand is on a payment plan? Uh, some people that don't have insurance write payment plans, so it might be paid over a five year time period. So, you know.
We'll, we'll start.
Money, but it might be delayed.
We'll start a process for an internal loan, make sure that you can start at least. We'll have to do that pretty soon, so we'll get it in place by the, or second of Ja- July.
They're gonna be safe, I mean, we have the revenue projected, that we know we're gonna get some revenue, we just. Can say exactly how much that is, it's, it's a gift.
And then it's, it's also, again, it have by twenty four hours, the city will be yes, you're ready for services, you know, provided twenty three. Uh, so those revenues will initially be split fifty, fifty, I can take the city fifty going into combination until we close down, you expensively have, uh, you know, that. Bills that are coming twenty four, twenty three services or.
Better.
Looks like if we do. Uh, so I, I don't expect it will be, uh, more than a month or two, that will have that fifty, fifty revenue strip. Uh, split, and after that, just all the revenues that city EMS receives for the twenty three services will be redirected, uh, to the, the service with accounting.
Anybody have any questions on the transfer of assets from the city of Algonia to Assoue County?
I did, there was a bit yesterday about the financial transition, because it's, to me, it's pretty vague, it's not very clear. And, um. If it does happen in ten years, you know, how, we're gonna make sure that we have to follow the policy as it's written. So knowing what that is. Is, is kind of vague, of course, it's, it's up to you guys to approve, to approve it or not. Um, my concern is, is it clear enough in ten years for us to know what that means?
So, um, when we had talked the other day with the defined service area, I could understand how that would be a term that's used. In different lights and stuff, um.
I did bring my mouth.
Do you have, um, okay, that helps, um, but. In the final draft, did you add nine one one?
Yes.
Service area to that?
Yes.
Okay, um. So if we add this, um, cities define nine one one service area, that would. More, more, more clearly described that it's geography rather than a line in the budget.
That clears up that issue, yes. Um, the only other issue would be future revenues minus any debt costs or expenses remaining, what does that? Because in ten years, if that happens, they're gonna wonder, what is that improving?
Oh, it means any debt to EMS budget has remained and is paid off before any money is transferred back.
Yeah, I, I don't know what. Wouldn't be clear there, I guess, if you have, um. It says future revenues minus any debt costs or other expenses remaining, if any.
Elizabeth's concern yesterday was also the same, it's a little dubious, but was the word she used, but if, um. If you guys are comfortable, it's just gonna be the idea of making sure that when it happens or if it happens. That this is followed to the team, that's what would be audited is what we do is, is following this and whether this is enough for the audit. To inform to follow.
Yeah, I guess, um. She called me back after she had talked to you and, um. Said from an auditing perspective, she couldn't give any advice that way, but, um. It was just whether it was followed out and carried out, so I think, I guess, with the language Todd's put in there. I don't know what more could be added to clarify that, I guess, I don't.
You could separate the rolling stock and physical.
Separate.
Building. It might be different. Ten years, some now.
I guess the county attorney has approved it, the city's attorney has approved it, I don't know how much more.
That's all, that's all part of the service, so I don't know if you can really.
Yeah.
Draw a bunch of lines in, in the middle and cut it up.
You know, see the perspective, the intent on that is, you know, if we're. In the rent at the end of the year, you know, for services right here, those future revenues that we haven't received yet should go to, to make the city hold before that transition takes place.
That's what just.
Yeah, whereas.
That's exactly.
Same, so it would be the exact same way to, but coming back, or if there's a positive fund balance that was earned by the service, that goes, if there's a positive. That would come back, hopefully we don't find ourselves, I can't imagine a situation where it be in the best interest of the citizens of this. Algonia or the county to see it come back to the city, uh, but just more or less have it set up, so the same way it's going out, if it ever were have to revert back, same process coming back.
I, now, my mind jumped to a conclusion that if city didn't want it, and somebody else wanted to take it over, what would you do?
I don't think that's a.
Probably not.
That's not a option in.
Not an option, but.
Because, because the whole, the whole concept of this is to. Yes, jump in if you guys have any better way to say this, but. Flip a switch in the, in regards to organization, so the service. Function, the nine one one calls are still answered, all that, but it switches from city to county. And everything goes with it and everything would go back if it was to reverse, it's just changing the name for an. Organization would be. Probably the simplest way you could possibly describe it, but it's structured in a way that it is reciprocal, going and coming, um.
I guess to answer Rod's question a little bit on that is, let's say we did have a private company that came in and said they wanted to, um, take over EMS in Cassup County. This language does not address that, nor, and I don't feel it should address that. That should be someone's dress between city of bonus, a city council, and then, then board supervisors, if you want that to happen, and that, at that time to determine if, if you're going to. Fund them any money or equipment upfront to start a business that they want to start. But I guess that would come down to that point is, if the two entities requested them to come in a bit, or if they're just coming in trying to bid it. And how, how much you want to work with them, so I don't know how we could really address that, because there'd be too many. Factors involved in that, you know, on why they came, so.
Yeah, it'd have to be a separate agreement. Plus, that, that avenue was explored, um.
And nobody's even, you know, been at this time.
Or with our population and call volume and everything, it doesn't financially make sense, hence why this is supported by tax dollars, um. So if our population continues to go down, I don't see that ever happening unless. Medicare, Medicaid, insurance reimbursement rates go through the roof, um, which I don't have, first of all, but I don't see that happening either, so. I don't, I don't think we could possibly prepare for a situation like that in this agreement, it would have to be a future, decision down the road.
And there was a lot of discussion on how we would work this, because, yeah, the unknown, it might be five, ten, twenty years, and I mean, just. What EMS was ten, twenty years ago compared to today and how much has changed. You know, it's just how, you know, even if you try to get the, the specifics of how it's all structured, funded, state, federal. You know, can all change, so try to keep it, you know, have the principles in there of how it's about to be applied at the time of time.
And, and that's why it's difficult to say.
Yeah.
So to do that, because you don't know. And, and that's why, you know, I'm just letting you know that that, you know, I don't see any issues and hopefully won't be any issues, but that would be.
I, I don't know what we could make it any better, so. I would entertain a motion to approve the medical service.
Transition agreement?
Yep.
So moved.
I have a motion by Kyle, I'll second.
Is this one just for the city of Algonia to send?
Just for the city, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry, who's second?
Card's gotta be slicked. I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any more discussion on it? Hearing down all those in favor, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried unanimously. Are we done, Phil?
I'm done.
Done today.
Workation, first, who wants?
Try again.
Wanna do Doug?
Oh, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah. Drinking that much water here.
We'll get this.
I got a bunch of their policies.
Okay.
These other ones, we just, well, I'm scared you keep them or what, we'll get the rest of the. And I don't have the city's back either from last night, yeah.
Thanks for being here, David.
See you later.
Yeah. Yeah. All good things must come to an end.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Phil.
My, I'm, it's so loose.
My only concern is that, why won't be here in ten days? I won't be retired, so.
Your imagination that you're gonna be.
I mean.
Say no.
Are we taking a break?
Just like a, a minute here.
You got, you got, you got time. Go ahead. We'll, we'll bug off for a while.
Time is a picnic tonight, it was six thirty.
Four forty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty to six thirty.
Maybe I didn't.
Is it?
I have it on my calendar here, just so.
I just got it wrote down.
Four thirty to six.
I didn't even write it down.
Yeah.
Where's it at? At the park out here?
That's also in my calendar, I didn't look, I'll get there this afternoon. How's Spencer today?
Not too bad.
Good deal.
You get rid of that old grumpy old man yet?
Close, Roger.
Are you really?
A few weeks away.
Is there actually a date set?
Yep, July fourteenth, we got.
Boy.
Date set, so.
I haven't just done that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, he's, uh, he's been pushing it off, pushing it off, pushing it off. He finally picked a day, we think maybe it's why you gave him the ultimate.
Most likely.
So he's, seems to be a piece of it, ready to retire, so.
Wow, he's been here a long time.
Yeah, he's been at it for thirty years.
You're gonna keep Minnesota lying then?
Try to, see. Morning, how's it going?
Good.
See you, Jim.
Yeah.
Did you write the times down now, Ferguson? For the pick.
I did, I did. Forget it now.
Just tell, don't, don't forget to tell the boss.
That's right, oh, I, I just told Kaylee.
There you go.
Reminded me, cause we got invited supper tonight. So we're trying to pick that up. Okay. What was that?
Pretty sure it's a Smith Lake.
With Lake, that's what I was saying.
Go ahead. Yeah.
With like.
Smith Lake Shelter House. Not the, not the nature center, the shelter. On the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
South side of the lake.
Very good. You know, I, I know they make more money out there having the campers and stuff, but I do kinda miss how it used to look, like all the trees.
Mm-hmm.
Being there, yeah.
There's been some times it's been kinda, um, empty with their new policy.
Yeah.
I don't know if, if that's working out the way they.
What was the new policy?
No, it was.
You've seen on Facebook when people.
There's, there's definitely people that are not happy about.
What, what is in the new policy that?
A certain, I, I don't know specifics on it, but it's a certain timeframe you can be there, and then you have to like. Rebook or move out and come back to a different spot or something.
Or they're trying to not have people camp all summer, even?
Kind of, yeah, to, to get more availability for people who couldn't get in previously, which. I understand that, but if you have a large portion that are open.
Did they take out a bunch of trees or something?
They took out, they took out a bunch of, bunch of trees and, and made that area.
People, people were talking about it on Facebook that, that just camped, that now it's, it's louder. And they have no wings, they, you know, because the tree removed.
That would make sense.
Yeah, there, there's some people talking about, they like.
Well, I don't know. It, it is definitely, it's a lot bigger campsite now, for sure, yeah, more.
And, and I, I go out there fishing all the time, and there is, is quite a few times that there is campers, they are. I thought you called it. I did that one spot all summer, like.
Down above the steps.
Oh, does anyone wait for him?
Oh, oh, they're all still here?
Well, some.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh.
I'll get him, Josh.
Bye.
Maybe.
Nope, you got, got.
It's the second worst job in the county. What is? Being the county attorney here, you're never gonna be right.
What's the first?
Being the auditor.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I see you too, what's new? Oh, not too much, you stand. Hello, everyone.
Good morning. We are, oh.
Josh is taking his second break.
It's not good for you, fish swimming that stuff.
Hopefully not.
We are up to road construction, the road right, well, I didn't see any.
There is no request for construction road right.
So, and then we're up to this discussion with our county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, resurfacing projects, cold and place project is, the cold and place part of the resurfacing project is complete. Uh, there is one area that is kind of. Uh, inserting out there, if it would unravel, we will be putting a full depth. Patch in it to, uh, to resolve that issue, but we are watching it right now. But, uh, we gotta see what happens as things progress. Uh, the federally funded bridge project south of Titanca. It either is gonna start the beginning of next week or after July fourth, is the way they were talking. So, they thought, uh, Graves Construction is contractor, they thought it was more that it would be after July. The holiday. Uh, Algonard Airport, I just spoke with Jacob Jaden, and the city council did approve. The federal funding agreement, and that means that it can start August fifteen. And they are expecting the contractor to, uh, start, uh, shortly. After or if not on the fifteenth of August. The microserving project, Highway one sixty nine is complete, as far as we know, it does, certainly appears that way. And they just started up on Highway fifteen, so now, uh. We have a detour, P thirty and B nineteen is what I think it is, so. Uh, Kaseem County, uh, Kaseem Wind Project. Uh, we issued a certificate of completion for the road use agreement, so that's taken care of. Uh, we got some open positions for advertising for the transfer station. Uh, we just took a truck, uh, over to Decorah, the exhaust on it. One box, uh, had failed, so they're completing, uh, re- cleaning. Repair on that, that's gonna be pretty expensive, repair twenty thousand dollars, uh, maybe more. We also, the hook truck, uh, from the transfer station. Uh, needed some work done, that's at Decorah right now to get that work completed. Readings, uh, not readings, but dump it is hauling our, uh. Recycling boxes temporarily until we get that whole truck back. Um, other than that, that's really all that I have.
How are we coming on those mechanic positions?
Um, I'm doing a little bit more reviewing, I did get some, uh. References, and I need to visit with them to see how everything's like.
We got two candidates for that that you're.
Uh, we interviewed three.
Three? Okay. Those are all for the Algonard shop, or?
Oh, that's, we only have one.
Yeah, there's only one mechanic.
Shout out there.
Second nervous one.
Just north side town.
Up by. Uh, up in Tyke, on the northeast corner of town. There was on the, on the north shoulder. Uh. Kinda right as you're going out of town, there's. Maybe need some. Ford there, rock or something to, um, it was brought there. But. Something's wrong, but. You're drop off there. Pretty important, before you lost the road there, I, I don't, might, if, if somebody drives it by, worth taking a look.
Okay.
Like, on the black top, yeah, yeah, on the big six road, going.
Going east.
Bound. Well, it'd be, be going westbound on the north side of the road. What I was told.
That's on the east side of.
East side of Titanca, oh, yeah, yep, yep.
Oh, you're on the big six road.
Right.
Yeah, that would be. Wonder if that'd be by the cemetery and all that.
Yeah, in that area.
Okay.
But I, I don't know specifically.
I will review that.
Other than that, no.
Alright. Um, that apartment head meeting, were you guys just gonna get ahold of us for that? Do you have any idea how long, uh, the next few items are gonna be by any chance?
Just have.
Say.
Update on the latter one, so I don't know how long.
Okay.
And then during the repair, basically.
Ten fifteen, ten thirty, maybe?
Ten.
Probably ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
But we're gonna, we're taking a break in here someplace, so if it's ten thirty.
Just kinda get your.
Yeah, we'll watch.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good day.
Yep.
You too.
We are up to BD ninety, lateral one tile project.
Do you wanna grab Marjorie?
Yeah, three minutes.
Three minutes, yeah, well, I missed that here, probably do it three minutes.
And I passed out, um, the thing from the strange district association.
Okay.
Law change to the board. A week or two ago, whatever it was.
Yeah, it was last.
Two weeks ago, I think.
Okay, I printed one, but you all have it already then.
Yeah.
Perfect. Just handed out some maps, and then I put together, since we've got a couple new board members, uh, just a brief timeline of the project, so we can get everyone up to speed.
About Germania.
This is Dakota.
Not Germania.
Not even in your lifetime, Roger.
Still in the bank, if you go in the bank, and, and, and in the code, you can still see if you're main.
Can you?
On the state.
I can't say that, I've never been.
I don't bank frequently in the building.
Don't you? It's, it's a, it's a subsidiary of Buffalo Center.
Okay. Back now, they clearly looked at the bank, I don't have anything.
Come back, there's nothing to work on.
Yeah, I'm gonna send that in another, probably about.
Ten thirty.
Perfect.
The water's not coming out of that pipe very quick.
No, I guess, I was gonna share some, uh, drone videos here.
But it is, it was getting dried up there, it was close until, um, this last rain we had, so.
Yeah.
We're getting somewhere.
Yeah, so, well, first of all, good to meet a couple of the new board members here, um. Officially, I guess, we met passing, but, um, Spencer Pack with I S G, um. Previously worked with Ivan Wrestler, senior civil engineer, uh, drainage projects. As you might have heard earlier, Ivan is officially retiring now, finally, uh, next month, so. I recently got my, um, professional engineer's license, so I'm taking over, um, all the projects I've been working with, and Ivan. Uh, been involved, um, with Sioux County in this project, as well as some, uh, previous ones, uh. Since twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, this one, I believe, we started in early twenty twenty one, so, um. The timeline there kinda lays out, um, the previous, um, action and items that have happened in this project, um. Also on your plot here, uh, this shows kinda the location, we're talking right around Lakota. I do have a drone video here just to kinda show, kind of the, this is about a month old, early May, we had somebody in the areas, so I had to grab a flight of this, um. But we're starting down here at the bottom, where the tile outlets into the open ditch, and then we'll just follow the tile up, um, along little ways there, so. You can see here, this was, I believe, like, the eleventh of May, if the date is coming to mind, um, you can see the tile outlet was flowing. Um. Generally, uh. This lower end here doesn't look too bad. My understanding, Kyle, is this the area that repairs were done last summer?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, you got that highlighted correctly.
So.
There, there was a lot of trees and a fence and stuff that you went, that was gone through, um. You can pretty well see the area that was, um, disturbed during that construction, and then the tile, you can see. The tile continues on, um, kinda straightens out to the east until it crosses the road there. And then, um, gets over towards the side and hooks up to the north, and you can see spots were dug up there. And that's.
It's that next, next bunch of trees there.
Yep, now we're up to that next issue.
So, yeah, what we flew past was the twenty twenty two issues, correct, that were resolved.
Yeah, that was, that was repaired with non-perforated and is functioning. Now we're up to the next line of issues.
Right along the east side of.
Yep. And then you see ocean property.
Yep. It is, um, do you know, Kyle, where, where this located at out here, was it, is it running, I know we originally thought potentially it was running up through into the park here.
I don't have specifics, and I don't know if there's a spot on the map, I don't know exactly where in that trench it is, off the top of my head.
But, but we had similar tree root issues through here.
Yeah, and we have photos to document that.
Yep.
I think, I think it's running underneath the trees.
Is it, and it could be.
I, I think it's kinda close, I don't know exact, though.
Um, and there is.
Yeah, it is.
It actually cuts kind of straight east almost, and then where it crosses this road here, there is an intake in this road pitch.
Yeah, we did find that intake this spring.
You did?
Yep, barely, um, it actually looked like a washout, like a hole in there, and then. Got down and uncovered it, and there was grass over top of a grate. So.
I've never found it.
Yeah.
We.
Um, actually, if you go back to where it crosses the road, I can probably point down.
This video here.
Okay, um, I should pause it there.
Yeah, it looks like maybe right there. Yeah, it looks like maybe right there.
There's a fence.
It's a little bit of a hole right there.
I think, I think you're right, this, it is, it is past those, but. It might even be up in here, it's hard to tell, make sure, um. But, yeah, it's in that area for sure.
Why don't you point out the railroad?
Yeah.
That whole longer is it jammed in there?
And you can see.
Yeah, you can see that pretty clearly.
Railroad, uh, the tile does cross, there's a railway bridge there, and it does cross under the bridge, there's. Intakes now on each side, is that correct? Of the, yep.
There's actually, so there's, there's one on each side that comes up significantly, like. Couple feet from the ground level, so they are not taking water in, but there is one, an old um intake. Which I believe might even be within the railroad right of way, um that is. Probably two feet below ground level, um and that's very likely pulling in sediment. Um, that might be part of our issue, but we haven't been able to get it dry enough to be able to get in there and actually do the work. But. We need to to either televise or jet or bowl to figure out what we got to deal with there, but that. Upper portion past the railroad tracks is substantially wet, but that intake is definitely pulling in. Dirt and debris and a lot of water.
Uh, so, yeah, we can see in it, uh, we don't need to show everything, but the tile continues up past, actually crosses one sixty nine twice. Then comes back over and drains this area up here, but you can see obvious drainage issues there, uh, just a quick preview of the timeline. Um, there was originally a request for repairs at the railroad crossing, um due to the nature of. Kind of the complexity of the work required at the railroad crossing, the board that appointed us to investigate, uh, there was jetting done in early twenty twenty one. Under the railroad, um, and then we had presented some preliminary findings, um. And we uh we were directed to further research some potential improvement options, um for the landowners, we had an informational meeting with landowners. Uh presented them with options for uh venture to repair the tile under the railroad or uh look at some improvements. Uh, we did have an informational meeting, that time there were no objections, uh, we proceeded with the final engineer's report, um that was filed. We did have the hearing, um had a number of objections, um I think primarily due to cost, uh. And then the hearing was continued until January twenty twenty two, um remonstrance was met, so the improvement portion of the project was stopped. If they continue hearing, um however, the repair under the railroad um was approved by the board at that time. Um, and what can be out with that is this main going through here is twenty four inch uh for quite a while, actually. What we had proposed as an option was, uh, because of how difficult it is to get this work done in the railroad right away, and how tough it is to permit and work with them. Uh, potentially putting in a larger pipe across the railroad now, um so that that pipe would be large enough for any future improvements. When they did happen down the road and basically get it done in one shot, not have to do a second project in the future, uh, so that was was approved. Um, and then we ran into the downstream issues um in twenty twenty two, um, and we did receive. Um, uh, last summer, a draft uh crossing permit in the Union Pacific Railroad, um. But with some of those issues that were found downstream, um, we were asked to pause work on things and tell someone that can be resolved um downstream. Uh.
And it's been too wet, I mean.
Yeah.
Couldn't get out there at all.
Um, and so I guess where that kind of leads us to is the last item on my timeline there, which Kyle eventually shared the memo with you, but. It's really great news, actually, um, just to give, I, the memo gives a quick historical background, but the drainage code. In my opinion, and I think probably most attorney's opinion, pretty clearly states that railroads are responsible for the tile within their right of way. Um, and as the railroads do, they fought that over the years, uh, with their attorneys. In twenty thirteen, there was a Iowa Supreme Court decision, uh, basically what the railroad came after was the definition of a drain in the code. And they stated that tile, underground tile, actually aren't drains, uh, and because of that Supreme Court decision, uh. Basically from twenty thirteen until uh basically now, um, it was, the precedent was that. Any tile work, underground tile, so not a culvert, not an above ground culvert, but underground tile. In railroad right away was the responsibility of the drainage district to pay for, um, and do, which was the path we were following previously. Uh permitting the work to be done, the drainage district would complete the work under the railroad and pay for the work under the railroad. Um, I don't think anybody liked that, but that was what we were dealing with, that's the way the law was, um. Really great news and a memo that Kyle shared, I do have copies if anybody wants one, but um. As of June first, um, House File seven fourteen was approved, um, and it clarifies um the definition of. A drain in the drainage code, and now states that includes a drain tile or tile line, um. And my understanding, it's the opinion of the Drainage District Association, their attorneys, that this should clarify and take care of that issue of the railroads not paying. Or um the the tile, you know, right away. And and really, I mean, if the tile crosses the county secondary roads right away, the county secondary roads pays for it. The tile crosses the DOT right away, the DOT pays for it, the railroad has been kind of the exception for the last ten years, uh, and it's believed that this. Clarifies that, uh, so it's great news for the drainage district because this was gonna be a huge expense um to the landowners to get this done. Uh, and and now there's um a little more backing, I guess, uh, for the drainage district to. Uh, go after the railroad to get the railroad to do it, so.
I don't know if you have the dollar amount off the top of your head, but I believe it was four hundred and some thousand.
So that was, I think.
The whole in estimate.
Yeah, all in for that option with all the uh permitting, um, and construction admin, we had the lagging and all that too.
So just a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a lot um to do that, and that was with the bigger pipe, um.
Yep.
So, I guess what I kind of want to talk about with the board today is this law change, which goes into effect on July first, um. Really changes things, in my opinion, for this district, and we need to kind of reevaluate strategy with this, um. We do have a draft permit from Union Pacific, um, that they provided us, but essentially. That draft permit basically is for the drainage district to get a permit, to do the work, to pay for the work, um themselves. In addition, my opinion, attorney has not read that permit yet, but it basically results in the drainage district signing away any future. I'll say rights of drainage, basically saying, this is now your responsibility now and forever, so. With the change in the law, I would strongly advise against not proceeding with that draft permit, um, and essentially kind of. Boils down to two things, um. There is, you could fight the language in that permit and try and get it cleaned up and proceed with doing the work and then. Trying to build back to the railroad, but I think that's more than likely gonna end up in a legal battle, uh, I think probably the best. Um, option to start is to try and work with the railroad, uh, and get them to do the work, uh, that's what we're doing. And we have actually another project right now, we'll see culverts that we're trying to get the railroad to replace, um. And that is also gonna be a process, it's gonna take some convincing on their part, um, the Culver project I'm doing with the Union Pacific right now, actually. Their uh contacted and worked with their, their senior engineer of infrastructure, um, has basically told me they're not. Opposed to the project, they understand why it's necessary, but they don't think they should have to pay for it, so, um, that's kind of where they land, I think. Uh.
Well, we can educate them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that that may, that may, that may have to be the case, uh, because they aren't gonna give way easily, I guess, on some of, some of those things, so. Um, where that kind of lands, I guess, is my um recommendation would be, uh, we. Kind of because there was a hearing action taken and the landowners last understood that they were gonna be paying for this to be done, and this is a change. Uh, I don't know if the board needs to um ha- potentially have an, have another hearing with the landowners or just amend the previous action. What exactly needs to be done, uh, so I'd like to um consult a legal counsel to get their opinion on how to best proceed, because we've got. Um, a material change in the project, uh, now, if it's for the better, I'm sure the landowner will be happy to hear this, um, but. Still, I'd like to consult with them to see uh what's necessary, how to best proceed, and then additionally, um, talk strategy on how to best go about. Working with the railroad on getting them to fix the tile across there right away. Yeah, Roger.
Well, you're going to have to. Ignore your previous conversation with the railroad and start all over again.
So, the good news is, we have, so, the Culver project I'm doing with Union Pacific right now. We started from the get go on that one, saying the district's not doing this work, we want you to do, it took me three and a half months of. Weekly phone calls and emails to just get in contact with the right person there. And they would not uh even talk to me until we submitted an online application. And for a permit, even though that's not what you're trying to do, it's a mess with their system, but. We do have a, for this district, we do have a project open with them, I have a contact there additionally, um. That project happens to be in Western Iowa, but the contacts, at least on their website, are the same for here and there, so. The good news is, I guess, I have the contacts with the folks there that I would need to and have those conversations, uh. And I am hopeful that we don't need to start over and, um, we, I have the contacts that can basically say, hey, there's a situation. Uh, we believe that, you know, you should be responsible for doing this, um.
So it should be an easier process.
Yeah, I I'm not expecting months of running things through the chain to get in contact with them, we already have, they're aware of the location, what we wanna do. Uh, there's a project folder open down there, and uh, so we can kind of just kick off with that.
So, today you want us to, okay, using an attorney?
What, what I wanna do is talk with legal counsel on more, let, I'd also like to get, um, their thoughts on the railroad process, but more the. Drainage code um process of what action was taken at public hearing and what the path we're going now, doing down now are two different things. Um, and I, and maybe you'll say, well, it's at less cost to the landowners now, so you're fine, you can proceed. Or maybe it's just an amendment of previous action, or maybe it's, you know, I don't know, maybe it's, so you need to have notice sent, hold another hearings, but.
Nothing like this ever happened before, so I have no idea.
Exactly, yes, and it's a good thing, it's a really good.
I got some now. I mean.
Well, why don't we just.
Can we add a minute if we try to make it right now?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
I mean, hopefully it won't, here, let's.
We have a whole bunch of time.
Yeah, but he might be able to shoot something pretty quick.
Wow.
It'd be answers.
I don't know an attorney that will answer a question that quickly.
Oh, he's answered questions for me.
Hello?
Hey, Jim, um, I got you on speakerphone, we're in our board meeting here, we've got Spencer from ISG. Um, talking about this drain ninety lateral one tile project, which has a railroad crossing repair involved in it. And, quick question for you, hopefully, um, we had action taken at a previous public hearing. To do a repair under the railroad tracks, but now with the state law that just changed, we will. Um, potentially take a different route because the railroad would be responsible for paying for that, so. With the previous action, do we need to hold another public hearing or an informational hearing or just a vote of the board as trustees? To change course with that, it would be a savings to the district, but um, just thought I'd try and get your. Advice or opinion real quick.
I'm not aware of any state law change that changed, this is a drainage district ditch?
This is, this is a tile that goes through the railroad tracks, and it was House File seven hundred and fourteen. Um, defined, uh, it changed the definition to include drain tile or tile line, which. Results in shifting the tile construction costs within the railroad right of way back to the railroad, so now they would. They would be treated like secondary roads or state DOT, et cetera, that pay for what happens within their right of way.
Which is always what I thought it said before anyway.
Yeah. Yep, exactly, but now, now, so the law was clarified in that regard, but um. We have previous actions, so do we need to rescind the previous action with a motion or go to a public hearing or? What's your recommendation on how to handle that process?
And tell me the previous action, Kyle, you do have an engine report.
Yep, um, there was a, there was a report for an improvement, the improvement got a remonstrance, so that was stopped. Then, the repair was recommended to replace the tile specifically under the railroad track. That was approved by the board, but then we've had tree root issues downstream of that. And just significant rainfall, so that has not happened yet, but. We have a previous action that would have been before the law change, so Spencer's recommending we, um. Kind of address that again, that way we have action after the law change, which would be handled differently. If, if you follow me there.
Well, the law was wrong in the first place, so that is a. How, how long ago did you have this hearing?
Uh, January of eleventh of twenty two. So it's, it's been a bit.
Over a year.
Yep. So, would you recommend just having a new hearing and talk about it there?
It wouldn't hurt to revisit it, Kyle.
That's, I would agree with that, just thought we'd try and get your legal opinion.
I'm assuming this repair of where this uh district tile goes is in a place that the railroad selected. And as a result of it, uh, well, I need a lot. Fair, I I do know what you're talking about, it kind of took me by surprise, so.
Yeah.
It's probably a good idea, it's not gonna cost that much to do it.
No.
And you get the landowners back up to speed, and it gives the engineer an opportunity to explain the project again to everybody.
Yep.
And at least have landowners get copies of the, the uh, report. But it doesn't change that at all. You're still one to to restore, renew, and you have to do a repair, you know all of that.
Yep, yep.
And so, it's, it's not a matter of choice, but it does get them up to speed.
The, yeah, the biggest thing is the change in cost, because they were expecting the cost to be on the district or on the landowners, but. Um, I think, I think you answered my questions anyway, I don't know if the board has anything further, but I. I think going to a public hearing is a good idea, so.
Had you called earlier?
No. Not on this one.
Okay, this morning I knew.
Oh, no, not today.
I was in getting an EKG at the hospital and I missed a call, and then I got this one.
No worries, so, sound good, we will let you out, thanks, have a good one.
Yeah, take care.
So go ahead and contact Marge and set up a date for a public hearing then.
Yeah, what, I think what I should also do is I can just assure um amendment to the report, just the one page, basically summary of what we just talked about. So that's available, so when landowners ask, you can say, hey, here's the situation, uh, so.
Yep.
I can provide that, and then we can coordinate on, uh.
Wait on a time and next week we'll approve it.
Yeah, yeah, set, setting a date.
Can we do that today with the agenda, don't we now?
No.
It's not. Yeah.
Yeah, I would recommend just waiting and then you'll have, I can, I, you know, basically I'll just file that.
Do it.
To the report.
Do you have any idea what would work for you if you bring something to us next week?
Um, so it has to be forty days after that, yeah, we're looking at one, two, three, four.
August?
Um. August, uh, fifteen, if you wanted to do it on a Tuesday.
Okay.
That's in my mind.
I think if we could do it there before we have everyone getting in the field, that'd be good.
Yeah, so, okay, oh, that, that sounds great, um, would the board have any issue with me in the meantime, just, uh. Doing a little bit of kind of trying to get the ball rolling in Union Pacific and, you know, emails to them, just the.
Long as you don't jeopardize them.
Right, right.
Paying for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that'd be an issue.
And I'll probably wait till after July, because it's like when the law changes.
Right.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to.
And just two quick things I wanna run through to, um, associated with that, just so the board's aware, the pipe size thing, the landowners. Elected at their own additional cost, put in the larger pipe for future improvements. Um, because there is no improvements happening now, it's possible that Union Pacific will say, we're not gonna put in a sixty inch pipe, we'll only put in whatever's needed to maintain current drainage. Now.
Which I'm assuming they'll say twenty four inch tile, like.
So depending if they, yeah, if they jack and bore a steel pipe, um, it'll probably be twenty six because of the interior diameter being large enough. But, yeah, they have twenty four, twenty six, or whatever they decide to do, um, then the other item, and we can talk about this at hearing or whatever is. Um, that, that previous hearing, the board had directed us to proceed with annex of reclass, we haven't done any of that yet, just because the project's kind of been on pause, but we should. Revisit that, I still think there's value, I know land. We haven't done any of that yet, just because the project's kind of been on pause, but we should revisit that, I still think there's value, I know landowners. Were interested in knowing what their cost would be for any potential improvement, uh, so. There is annexation and reclass kind of hanging out there that we can discuss at hearing as well, but this one for sounds good. So, well, yeah, that's all I have anyways. Okay, thank you.
We will go to drainage repairs, Marge. Thanks Spencer.
Yeah, yeah.
I told the IDVA that you were in charge now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've been told that a couple times, so.
Yeah. I assume that he retired already Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've got, uh, number sixty three, Super Drainage District. Handcuffed pursuit. Twenty five dash seven, one seventy six, uh, in section thirty four Prairie Township for Craig Gunther. You have a. Two things, washout, um, bank in the open ditch on the west side. All the outlet pipes has been down, needs repaired, and the second thing is, needs outlet pipe replaced. And I have. On pack one, it's number sixty four. In section four, Woodmore Township. Requesting Brian Tool is washout on on the bank, which were. That's all part of the.
Yeah.
Part of the larger scope of things. And then. Number sixty five, Drainage District, one hundred and fifty six. Final thirty one. Section twenty two of Irvington Township for Chris Capacious. Uh, there's a broken tile, large washout needs repair.
Ready for me?
Yeah, Kyle, you got one.
Yep, I, uh, sixty six and Greenwood fourteen for replacing a couple outlet pipes for Tim McNerdy.
Anybody got any questions? Not identifying a motion for the supervisors to do their repairs. Quiet, I'll second your motion, although he's in favor.
He stole Josh's thunder, I'm a second.
Darn.
Oh, good job.
I don't get to second very often.
You go ahead, you go ahead. I just heard the sigh over here.
I was promoted in a second on the floors, is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Discussion with our auditor.
Okay, I have a few things quickly, um. We're not gonna, but because July fourth is on a Tuesday, we won't be having a board meeting that week. So, uh, we'll be be claiming, paying claims on July eleventh. Usually we'll be be paying them that first week, but we'll be pushing it back to the eleventh, so we'll be paying claims the eleventh and the, or approving claims, sorry. The eleventh and the eighteenth, um, of July, which actually is good because it gives us time between payroll and that, so that. Just so that you know, there will be no meeting that week and, um, we'll be doing clicks, approving claims the eleventh and the eighteenth, um. There's been a lot of discussion between auditors on the EMS, the new EMS levies, um, a couple of the counties are doing inter fund loans. To make sure that they have enough money for payroll and other expenses, so they don't come to July. Payroll and not have enough, but so that, um, is an option, um, if you're okay with it, I did get it. I did get a copy, it was a copy from O C O, O C O, that can be. Um, they're transferring a hundred thousand, but if it's okay with you, I'd like to put that on the agenda for next week for discussion to open it, if you guys are ready.
Yeah. Are you thinking just discussion or?
Um, I was thinking discussion decision, but tell me.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to. Yeah, I think, I think we should get it in place. Um. Soon, so we don't have to worry about it.
Just in case, because we hate to get to payroll and have any fun. Okay, so then, um, I'm gonna be gone, I leave tonight for Isaca in West Des Moines. That's through Friday, they have quite a bit of stuff on our agenda for the week, so it'll be a busy week for us. Um, then they have set up a special class in September that's gonna go over the news and it's filed. I would like Roger to go with, um, I don't know if that's gonna be okay, because usually seats are eliminated at these classes. They're gonna go over it in depth with us and let's expect for the next fiscal year. So that, they haven't set a date for that September class yet, but I think it's gonna be a really important class. So it always, it's always better if there's two events than just one, so, but we can talk about that as the date gets said, but, um, that is coming up. September.
Good.
And I don't think they set a place to have that, hold that at yet, and I'm guessing they're gonna have more than one because they're not gonna get all of us.
I think that they're gonna need more. Education, to say the least, um.
You know, they.
What the House files, trying to file that.
They, uh. The auditors and.
Is that through your auditors association for that one?
They set up, um, a committee that's been working together to. Air it down and try to come up with key points and try to understand it the best they can, because it is quite confusing in some spots, so.
Well, it actually contradicts itself, as you read through it.
Yeah, and and I'm sure, um, state auditors, this will be part of that too, um. So I, but I will let you know, know more as that comes up, but that is something that. I'm looking at next week. Discussion on the proposed abandoned planning and zoning ordinance for hazardous liquid pipelines. And then we have, um, in their change of the payroll period, depending on what happens today's. Department head meeting, the only other thing that I have is, um. You guys have all got our emails and I think even, um, mailings on the County White Breakfast sponsored by State County Academic Development. That is on July twenty sixth, and I know you look like I S V P's. Um, back by the twelfth, uh, but I told her that I would talk to you guys about it today and. So, um.
Yeah, I'll be gone.
If it, I will not be able to attend that meeting, you, okay, so Jack is.
Okay, Carter, you still wanna talk about carbon bike lane next week, we wanna forget it for another.
Uh, I don't know, I've cast.
And Jack, do you have anything else?
I, I, no committees other, I, I miss dwelling.
Jack?
No meetings.
Huh?
Um, we already talked about EMS way to bet today, so I think that covers that, but nothing.
I had a drainage association meeting once.
I was gonna ask about, um, the comments made by Gail in this morning, uh, previously people have been thrown out of meetings for disrespect. During meetings, so I, I don't feel like I have to put up with that every time I walks in. I, I would like that addressed.
No question.
I, I would like that addressed in some form going forward.
I stop somebody talking, I thought that's meeting and we don't know what they're gonna say until they say it.
Um. Saying that his comments are out of order and stay respectable.
Oh.
Other people have been told.
Yeah.
Similar.
Did they do?
It's, it's a regular occurrence.
It's your personal views, though.
Do we need to have a policy?
Outside the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, if, if it's not going to be addressed, I'd like it on the agenda next week to discuss a policy for.
Put it on the agenda.
End of meetings.
Be done now?
Yep.
We had a drainage association meeting last Wednesday. They went through a lot of items, quite a bit of it was all. State issues and state laws. And, uh, we're running out of time today, but is there any, anybody have any questions on any of the laws that were passed last year? About drainage?
Yeah, that has a summary of them and stuff.
Yeah.
I'll maybe look over that sometime.
I'll leave it here and anybody wants to look over it, grab it, look through it.
Fine by me.
And that's how I had last week. Anything else to come before the good of Cassius coming?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Have a motion and second on the floor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Turn.
Couple minute break.
Yeah, we're gonna have a least a two minute break.